Good morning. I would like to welcome you to the Public Workshop Meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, December 6, 2010. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved on, Chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The first item on the agenda is under Finance, and we will be receiving a budget update from Mike Bush, Finance Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. This report is for October. We just finished November, so we come to you about every -- it's about two months behind every time we make this presentation. So for the month of October, we took in thirteen million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, fifty-two dollars, bringing our grand total for the year so far to twenty-eight million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars, which is compared to last year at the same time we'd brought in twenty-five million, six ninety-five, three hundred and eleven dollars. And we are currently at twenty-four -- we've collected twenty-four point oh seven percent of our budget this year compared to last year. We were at twenty percent, so our revenues are coming in as expected, actually a little better than expected, and since November's already over, we do know that we've received some rather large checks from the Tax Commissioner, so we're right where we're supposed to be on the budget for revenues. And expenditures, basically the same story. We spent eight million, seven eighty-eight, one oh nine this month -- or October. Last October, we spent nine point eight million. Year-to-date, we spent thirty-four million. Year-to-date, last year, we'd spent forty million. So we actually spent twenty-nine point oh seven percent of our budget when we're at a time period where we're at thirty-three percent of our budget. So we're below our expenditure. We're keeping in line to where we want to be as far as revenues and expenditures go. We're still eighty-three million. We still -- we will collect eighty-three million, four hundred and sixty thousand more before the year's over. This is our SPOLOST collection. For November, we collected two million, one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. I'm sorry, that's for November. Last year, we collected two million, ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. We have -- right now, we're at ninety-two point seven-six percent of our one-hundred-and-eighty million dollar budget. We're still tracking right along where we thought we would be. This month is always a low month compared to next month with all the Black Friday and all that stuff that goes on, so people usually don't spend tracking, as you can see. Back in this other October, this is where we went -- that's where we were last year, and it was again two point -- right at two million, one hundred thousand, and this year we collected another two million, one hundred thousand. And for the year, we're still three point eight eight percent higher collection in this year than we were last year, and that's calendar years. So that's all I've got, unless any of you have any questions.
I have just one quick question, and this is back to the expenditure report. And you had mentioned that we were below projections on our expenditures. Do you anticipate that that trend is going to continue through the end of this fiscal year?
I very much so expect it to continue.
So we should see a greater percentage toward the end of this year that we can roll over into next year's budget?
That's what we -- we expect that to happen. We are -- like we've done like for the last year and a half, we've tracked what's being spent, we question things that may not necessarily need to be spent. A lot of the stuff we do actually goes through the county manager's office, and he makes determinations on whether or not it's time to spend this type of money and things like that. So yes, we are very much so got our finger on the pulse of the expenditures and making sure that we don't expend stuff we don't need. Now, if something comes up, you know, that we need to do, this savings would help us be able to do something like that, but as of right now, I don't foresee any of that.
Is there any categories in particular where you've noted a substantial cutback in expenditures, or is it just general things across the board in every department?
Well, if you look on this actual tracking that you're looking at now, if you look at public safety, there's about a half million dollars' worth of money that hasn't been spent there. That's really where I think the biggest -- and there are also now, there's sixty million dollars of our one-hundred-and-fifteen million dollar budget, but that's where we're seeing the most -- they are actually being very careful at what they spend and making sure that we don't, you know, have a problem. You know, we spent a lot of time putting this budget together, making sure that we can make this thing work, and the public safety departments have been very helpful in making sure that they stay within, you know, our budgets.
Any Board member have a question for Mike?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder?
Mike, as far as fund balance or the reserves, I know you can't give me an exact number, but roughly what is in that account?
I want to think it's forty-seven, forty-eight million is what our fund balance is, and again, that doesn't mean that's cash. That just means that's assets over liabilities and debt. So we've got forty-seven million dollars' worth of fund balance, which we have to have to maintain. We have to maintain a twenty-five percent reserve to keep our bond ratings where we're at. And this past year and this past budget, you know, last year's budget, we used like four million, three million, three to four million dollars of fund balance. We budgeted seven and a half million, but we were able to come in by cutting costs and doing stuff like that. And this year's budget, we actually went into, we were basically even. We did -- we had a little bit of extra revenue, it was less than a million dollars, that we were going to say that probably can go back into fund balance, which makes us very strong at this point, that we actually balanced the budget without having to go into fund balance. So that's the first time in the last four years we were able to do that. So we're pretty good, but, you know, it's still cloudy outside, so we better be careful.
That's the reason for my question, was to see just what condition we were in today compared to a year ago, and some of the things that we've done to try to maintain a strong financial presence, especially in dealing with our bonds.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Mike, can I ask you for clarification for just?
One second. The three point eight eight percent higher than collections through the same time last year, that's the last calendar year or the last budget year?
That is calendar year.
Okay. So that covers ten months then?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to public safety, we're going to have a presentation of the master plan for the public safety training facility. Captain Keith Goen, Police Department, Exhibit Number One. All right, well, actually --
I defer to my elder.
Actually, we have our Sheriff, Keith McBraer, and our Chief, Keith Nichols, this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you know, we are in dire needs of a firing range, and we've been without one sometime, and basically have been using Newton County or Jackson Prison or anybody else that we could use, get any time for their range. But between our two departments, the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department, we got over four hundred officers that we have to qualify, not including new trainees and people that just need to be working on the range. So Chief Nichols and myself, we've been talking about this for a long time, and I think y'all have been talking about it. We've got the property to do this, and we need to move on getting something done with that. We've talked about using some federal drug funds that I'm willing to put up a third of the money to do this project, and Chief Nichols says he can do the same thing. So we basically want to make that presentation. Chief Nichols has got some more information on that.
Early on in the process, when the Sheriff and I both came to the agreement that we needed this, I said I would designate two people, and he said he would designate two people. Obviously, we wanted to come together since this was a joint venture and make sure that this is what we wanted. I designated Captain Goen, who was at that time, he was over our SWAT team, so obviously he had a lot of knowledge in this field. And I also designated Sergeant James Dixon, who is a qualified firearms instructor. And then the Sheriff has identified Major Foster and Sergeant Cody. They came together in a collaborative effort to come up with what we really need. We've also been talking with the Chief and the Fire Department, since they're also our partners in this venture as far as the fire needs. We just wanted to make sure we weren't stepping on anybody's toes, but I'm going to go ahead and defer to Captain Goen now, and he's got the plan put together, and I think he's done an excellent job with this plan. We're going to phase it in, and obviously, the first phase that we've designated is the extreme need, like the Sheriff said, a dire need for the firing range. So I'm going to go ahead and let him present.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. I am hopeful that each of you were provided packages in advance to be able to review the details in reference to the Public Safety Training Center. My intent today is to provide you a brief synopsis of the overall plan, and then review the Phase One proposal for you all collectively. Since the acquisition of the proposed Henry County Public Safety Training Site in 2008 has been the goal of the Henry County Police Department, Sheriff's Department, and Fire Department to produce a plan to develop the land for the most effective use. Department heads from each section collaborated to provide a fiscally responsible vision to guide the growth of public safety while continuing to provide the highest quality service. After identifying which land portions each department required, the Chief of Police and Sheriff then agreed to merge their portions. This merging of entities would help avoid duplication of future efforts and unify the groups in their common goal. This also allowed for the consideration or consolidation correction of funds to share cost. Fire department training and equipment is inherently different than law enforcement. Once the designation of the land use was complete, the Fire Department then began work on a land use proposal for their portion specific to their needs. I come before you today to provide an overview of the law enforcement land use portion and to provide some of the considerations that went into the specific site locations that we recommend. The first phase of construction, construction will be conducted in phases, and each phase being planned, evaluated, and approved before beginning. A project team consisting of representatives from public safety, DOT project manager, and building maintenance representatives should be formed at the beginning of each phase from conception. During the planning of each phase, it will be decided how the project will be paid for, examples of which would be budgeted or would the use of Narcotics Seized Asset Forfeiture Funds, and additionally, who will provide the services for the construction specific. Authorization and approval for each phase of construction will be coordinated through the Henry County Manager and ultimately through you. It's our intent to schedule the phases over a duration of two-year periods. By doing this, law enforcement officers to complete mandatory training on a yearly basis and career-specific training throughout their tenure. We collectively agreed to prioritize the order of facility construction based on these requirements. Planning and scheduling will be out every two years, as I previously mentioned. The locations of the specific overall training site locations. The first phase would be the small arms firing range. Next, the classroom facility remodeling. And third, a canine training area to include obstacle course and demonstration area. Phase Four would be called the shoot house or the shoot move and communicate training facility. And Phase Five, the emergency vehicle operations course to include a mock training village therein. There's also an additional area that's been identified as an area for further expansion. When planning the overall land use proposal, there were many considerations to the training locations. These sites were selected based primarily on community impact, control and safety, and topographical and environmental considerations. Because of the first phase of construction being the small arms range, I will use this as an example of what you can expect from each phase of the proposal. The firing range site, for example, was placed relatively centered in the law enforcement portion of the land. This allows for proper noise dispersion by providing a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree barrier of natural trees and foliage. This location also provides additional security and control for those in its operation. Safety was a large consideration as well. By planning the range centered on the property and ensuring natural barriers are left in place, the potential for weapons accidents is drastically reduced. The standoff distance behind the actual impact berm is crucial for ensuring an unintended or malfunction discharge round are stopped and contained on the property. This is definitely not a normal practice, but with our intent to allow citizen participation on a scheduled basis, the potential exists and must be addressed. Lastly, the topography of the land and environmental issues had to be considered. By selecting this site, law enforcement ensured maximum distance from the surrounding landowners, residences, and roadways. The range location is as far off the roadway as possible and centered as much as topography will allow. Any adjustments to the location would require drastic land disturbance and tree removal at a highly elevated cost. Removal of natural sound barriers and safety barriers is never recommended, as our first goal would be to limit the impact on the community. Environmental issues are not only a concern, but they're going to be law. There are several streams, a lake, and wetlands that require consideration before any construction can occur. By selecting this location, we are working around existing water sources, retaining range water runoff, and maintaining EPA and EPD standards. Because the first phase of construction, because this is the first phase of construction, we wanted to set the standard for others to follow when the additional phases are proposed in the future. Each of these phases contained in the plan are based on critical tasks performed by law enforcement and focus on perishable skills that require constant attention. By having access to these facilities readily available within Henry County, we can ensure the highest level of proficiency for our officers because we schedule and control. By having access to these facilities -- correction. The latest level of proficiency, the highest level of proficiency for the officers because we schedule and control the facilities and classes, a higher level of job proficiency will be provided to the community. We limit the cost of sending officers to training outside the county and sometimes outside the state. And finally, we limit the potential and potentially head off any issues involving high liability areas for the county. For these same reasons and justifications, we consider for each and every phase of the proposed land use. Further site selection information is contained in each of the specific phase details inside your handouts. In conclusion of the overall land use plan, the Chief and Sheriff asked me to extend to you their intent to open portions of the training site to the public. Currently, we provide a citizens' police academy as well as a women's self-defense class. Both of these community events will incorporate the use of these facilities. In addition, we will eventually begin scheduling open range days, with members of the community can come and use the facility for familiarization with their personal weapons. Safety officials and instructors would be available to assist the citizens and provide a safe and controlled environment for weapons use. Also, the proposed canine facility will have a safe and secure viewing area where families can watch handlers and their dogs, negotiate obstacles, practice obedience training, apprehend simulated suspects, and perform searches. This concludes the overall portion of the proposal, and at this time, I'd like to move directly to the Phase One range proposal, if that's okay. The Phase One range proposal is the small arms range project. Phase One of this land use project is a small arm firing range. This is a top priority for law enforcement entities. Currently, Henry County Police and Sheriff's Departments do not have a facility to conduct state-mandated weapons qualifications. Their respective training divisions are making arrangements through other jurisdictions to perform this function, sometimes at a substantial cost. This project would provide a permanent, safe, and controlled location to conduct firearms training with a minimum impact on the surrounding area. Site selection, there are many factors that went into the site selection for the range. Some of these considerations are as follows. Proximity to surrounding homes and roadways, topography of the land in relation to the overall land use project, limiting major land disturbance and tree removal, thus limiting cost, and EPA and EPD considerations regarding watershed areas. If we were to draw an X over the land earmarked for public safety and law enforcement use, this location is almost centered on the property. This allows for growth in the surrounding properties without affecting our long-term goal of permanent location selection. After conferring with the Sheriff's Department on the location selection, the Henry County Department of Transportation personnel were then consulted. DOT personnel concurred with the location and said that the topography was ideal within a rolling decline and limited land disturbance requirement. DOT personnel also explained there are bio-environmental concerns regarding watershed and retention, and advised this location was best to address these concerns. Another consideration for us was noise reduction. This location provides the maximum distance from the roadway and residences without affecting the range configuration due to terrain. Portions of the property have steep incline and decline, which would require substantial land disturbance at a great cost. The proposed location would have a woodland noise buffer surrounding it on four sides. The design is a three-burn model, which directs the weapon report upward, allowing the noise to be dispersed vertically. From the very beginning of the proposal, it has been the intent of both of the department heads to use Narcotics Seized Asset Forfeiture Funds to pay for the construction cost. The Henry County Manager then agreed to use Henry County personnel and equipment to complete the construction to include Henry County DOT and building maintenance personnel. This phase proposal is what you can expect from public safety each time we were to submit for phase construction. Contained in the following presentation are the specific requirements to construct the range, an overall design concept, and costs for each element. This is a collaborative effort from Henry County Police, Sheriff, DOT, and building and maintenance personnel. In the Phase One proposal, we broke the project into specific areas of cost. These areas of cost represent a required portion of the overall land plan. For today's purpose, I won't go line by line on each item due to time restraints, but if there are any questions arise, I can stop and clarify any portion that you request. These are examples of the project breakdown. Driveway and parking lot. As you can see, each element and its associated cost are listed individually, so we can see specifically where the funds are required. The next area would be drainage, erosion control, erosion control continued, and again, continued. The next area would be the sand filter system for runoff control and retention of water. Next would be an open-air covered area for immediate training needs, range firing control, weather concerns, and weapons maintenance. Quotes for each one of the different areas of construction will be provided and have been coordinated through the personnel that will be completing the construction. This is just an example of such quote. This one specifically is for the pavilions. Targeting system quotes are also contained therein. Specific vendor information is also included within the proposal. And what I've done is by breaking down the areas within the proposal and their identifiable costs, we were able to give you a side-by-side comparison of exactly where the money would be used and for what specific purposes. In conclusion, it is the Chief and the Sheriff's intent to contribute two-thirds of the required funds for this phase of construction from Narcotics Seized Asset Forfeiture Funds. This would leave one-third of the cost to be funded by public funds. This project has been their highest priority. By providing self-funding in this manner, their hope would be that, if approved, citizens would see the fiscally responsible approach taken by all. Thank you for the opportunity. Do you have any questions for me?
Any Board member have a question?
I'd like to make a comment.
Mr. Holder?
I'd just like to say thank you for the comprehensive report that you have given this morning. And this facility lies within the area of the county that I represent, even though it's strictly a county facility. I know this board has received a lot of criticism for going in the direction that we did in purchasing this land several years ago, and now it's starting to come to fruition. Everybody knows that, well, actually from seeing the financial report that was made earlier, how things are delayed. I want to thank you, though, for this plan, and I certainly want to see us move forward at a pace that all of our finances will allow. And another thing, and I think the Sheriff made this comment early on, couldn't help but think about some of the issues that we've received on this property. When he made the comment about he was training, and I'm sure the Police Chief and others too are training in Newton County wherever they can, because the comment was made that the public safety training system in Forsyth was available and they could go there any time. So obviously, this is not the case. And if you think about the logistics of one-hundred-and-fifty-nine counties and so many police and city police and county police departments, there's no way that you could logistically train every officer in the state of Georgia. So this is why several years ago, we saw the need of purchasing this to have a facility similar to what you have designed. So I just hope that we can move forward as fast as we can with the funds that we have available. And I applaud you for drawing a plan that shows an area for growth, where it's not something where you just go out and say, "Yeah, I think that's a good place to put a firing range," and you do it. You have a plan, and no project is any good without a plan. And I just want to say thank you because I think it's well-planned. It's not exactly where I thought it would be, but in looking at what you've done, I can defend to the neighbors that I do represent as to why it may not be exactly where they were led to believe that it would be located within that said property. So thank you so much, and I hope that when this becomes reality, that we have an opportunity to invite a news reporter back down here so that they can see that this was for real and for real. and not just something for political reasons. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman.
I'd like to echo Commissioner Holder's comments, the main one being is the master plan, because without a master plan, like Commissioner Holder was alluding to, is that you go out there and build something, and then you've got to go tear it down because it's in the way of another project that you want to do, and I think the master plan looks very good. The other thing, and this is all just confirming Commissioner Holder, but it's true that we did receive quite a lot of negative comments on that, that I want it known also for the record that the property was purchased under appraised value at a time when the economy was still going on reasonably strong. So, there's a lot more to it, and the fact that you guys have come up with it, and the fact that Sheriff's Department and Police Department are coming together, I think that's very good for the citizens and for the county and the taxpayers to, you know, to receive some of what we're putting out there for it. And I also would say that I hope that there's a way that we can move forward, and move quickly forward with it, also to the extent of, let's look past the stationary targets and move forward with the rotating targets, something that we need to do. It's needed, and it's something that we'd have to turn around and do at a later date. So, I do applaud both departments for all of your efforts, and really thank you for all that you've done. I know that I had some comments early on about the positioning of it after seeing your master plan, seeing where you put in the village and some of the other things. You're well over three acres off of the road according, if my scale's halfway working, and I know it's not the scale, but I'm looking at it from that standpoint. So, I believe it's the best for all of us and for the citizens. And I also applaud you for having a open-range day for citizens, not just for the citizens attending the academy or for the ladies' self-defense classes, because I've had a number of people ask me, you know, "Are we going to be able to use this?" You know, it's our taxpayer money, basically, and I've told them there will be, and there's going to be some days that that'll be available, and it's great that you're able to put that into play. And I think it promotes a lot of peace and harmony with our citizens when we've got an investment out there of several million dollars, and they're going to be able to take some use of it and have some pride in it also. Thank you.
I'd like to make one other comment, and we probably wouldn't be at this level today had it not been a coordinated effort between the three departments. And I've been here for some time, and believe me, it has not always been that way, the way you could have fire, police, and sheriff sitting at the same table, may not even been in the same building. But I want to thank Keith McBraer specifically, because he is a constitutional officer, as we all know, but many people don't realize that. He's elected by the people, and he can do what he basically desires to do. And Keith, since being elected, has been certainly wonderful to work with, has given good ideas on utilizing prisoners to save the county money. Chief Nichols has done a great job, Chief Lacy. The point is, it takes rational men, or women, to sit down at a table with a common goal and work things out. And with this master plan that you've done, you see that there's a place in this plan for everybody, and nobody tried to get the greatest or the best or whatever. They saw the real need, and I think you identified that closely. The first immediate need is for the small arms firing range, and I think we all know that. But Chief Lacy didn't object, because his is going to come later. So, these are things that require a team effort and a coordinated effort between departments, and I just want to applaud you for that, because, ladies and gentlemen, it has not always been that way. And thank you so much from all of those departments.
Well, too, I also want to comment on the fact that you put this plan together yourself. If you had paid a consultant to come in and do something similar to this, I'm sure it would have added to that cost several hundred thousand dollars. And we have so many knowledgeable experts within the departments that you were able to sit down and work with our building department and with our DOT to develop this master plan and a great cost savings to our citizens. And I also always like to mention the fact that two-thirds of this would be constructed courtesy of our local drug dealers, and that's always a plus when we can use money to help train our law enforcement officers to combat crime in the community. Great job on the master plan, and I'm sure as we move forward in the different phases, there will probably be some federal grant money available when we get into the shoot houses and things like that. And so I'm glad to see us moving forward on this, and it takes time to plan these types of facilities. And yes, we've had the property a couple of years now, and it has been used, it just hasn't been used to its best potential. And I'm certainly excited about the opportunity of getting a state-of-the-art facility here for our public safety to train at and not have to send them out of county at the, I guess, at the whim of someone else's schedule. So, thank you so much for the job you've done putting this together. Any other board member with a question or a comment?
Madam Chair. Mike Bush, I think this is to you. It looks like it's going to be a 35,000 split between three ways. I mean, well, that's our contribution. Have you secured that portion, or was it a budgeted item in the beginning, or have we located our side?
We have set aside some money within the budget to take care of this, yes, sir. It's in a, it's like a contingency account, it's for unexpected expenses that come up at any time during the year. This is one of those that we didn't know was going to happen at the beginning of the year, but we set aside money, small amounts of money for things like this to take place. Plus, we could really do it with the savings we've had from the public safety departments from this point, from the beginning of the year to date. So, yeah, we definitely have the money and the budget to take care of this.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bassler. I would like to make a comment. We did get thrown under the bus or take a lot of heat over when we purchased this, and just like these other men and women have said here. One thing that we mustn't forget, when we send those officers to get certified with it being Forsyth, and they've taken the time to go down there, and I've heard them say, "Well, we've gotten down there, and we've had to wait over an hour, hour and a half before we could start." The thing that always occurred to me, that if we had a crisis or something that went on in this county, we've got men scattered all over the place to try to get certified and trained. So after everything is said and done with us purchasing this, I'm so, I'm proud to think that this is coming to light, that we'll be able to use this in our county, because right now we've got 400 folks that will certify to be able to shoot, to train them. And this county, over 330 square miles, and probably 200,000 citizens know that we're going to keep growing over the years. I think it would be a foolish mistake for this board to sit here and not take advantage of some kind of facility like this. And I know that, just like Commissioner Holder and Commissioner Bowman said, we took some heat over this. And after he'd made his debut on the TV and a couple other reporters unlike him, I hope that they will come back and see what this county has planned to do, and that will come to reality that we can use. But the greatest thing that, in my mind, over the whole thing was that, after we had gotten, the TV come out and some of the negative stuff had come out, I was talking to a SWAT guy one time, and he said, "We was down there and had to wait all this time before we could start. We were scheduled, but we had to wait." My question was then, if we had had a crisis in this county, where are they at? Well, they've got to ride back. So that's just the kind of the things, the way my mind was working. Now we've got them in the county, well, they might have to ride from the south part of it to the heart or to the northern part, but they're here. So, many thanks to the public safety, the fire department, and Sheriff's Department, Police Department, because I think this is something that's really, we're going to be able to be proud of in the years to come here in Henry County. So, thank you.
I would just echo what all my colleagues have said, it was, this is a very fiscally responsible presentation. This will save a great deal of money and time and resources, and I have gotten comments in the last week or so from citizens who aren't even public safety officers, who are very much in favor of this, and have heard nothing negative about it at all. So, it's time has come, certainly, and I know you guys are thinking the sooner the better, and that's my feeling also.
Well, I know this is not an item for public comment, but we do have a citizen who is here this morning who would like to speak about the facility, I believe.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner.
Good morning.
This is totally a surprise for me, too. But I just completed the Henry County Citizens' Police Academy, and I dealt with Chief Nichols, Sheriff McBraer, the most wonderful experience I've ever been through. I support this training facility, I was out there. We got to fire on the firing range, the wind was blowing, and the targets would go up like this, and no way thing could be certified. So, thank you, Henry County, Chief Nichols, Sheriff McBraer, and Commissioners.
Thank you. For the citizens who are going to be viewing this via Channel 14, I think our sign, my two fellow Commissioners pointed out, has been flashing hello up there since we started the meeting. We had a power outage in McDonough this morning, obviously, the timer fell victim to that and wasn't reset, so I do apologize for that. I know something like that could be rather distracting when you're viewing it on television. Thank you again for the update. This will come back to the board tomorrow evening for a decision, and we're going to move on to the next item, and that's going to be under SPOST, and the first item on that is an update on our capital projects. Our presenter is Michael Too, SPOST Capital Projects Manager. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners.
Our first project today is the Heritage Park, the Old Jail. From our last update, the jail was moved on August 23rd. The jail has lighting and signage, which is installed, and the project is now complete. The next project is Warren Holder Park Improvements. This project is in progress. The new stairs and sidewalk and fencing at the football fields are complete. The new retaining wall of the kids' baseball field is complete, and the new concession stand at football fields, the plans are in review with the county and the city. North Mount Carmel Soccer Complex. This project was completed in October. We tied in the existing four soccer fields, the irrigation to the detention pond irrigation system. This will be a considerable savings to the county. The Locust Grove Recreation Center. This project is in progress. The sports flooring and painting are complete. The elevator is currently under construction. We anticipate having the building complete in January. The Fairview Recreation Center. This project is complete, and the contractor is currently working on the punch list. Parks and Recreation started using the gyms this past Saturday for basketball. The ribbon cutting is scheduled for December 15th at 3:00 PM. The Locust Grove Senior Activities Center. This project is in progress. The kitchen modifications and the modifications for the pool room and arts and crafts room are in progress. The millwork slash cabinetry is also in progress. The engineered wood plank flooring is installed and complete. The grand opening is scheduled for February 14th. Emergency 911 Operations Center. This project is in pre-construction. The plans are in review at the City of McDonough, and the county has already reviewed the plans. We anticipate putting this project out for bid in February. Fire Station Number Nine, which is located in Stockbridge. This project is under construction. The groundbreaking was held last Wednesday. The estimated construction completion date is September 2011. The Forts and Library located in Hampton. This project is complete. The staff has moved in, and the completion date was in September. The Haven House. This project is under construction. The exterior is 90% complete, the sheet rock is in progress, and the estimated construction completion date is in May. The Judicial Center Parking Deck. This project is now complete and has been in use since September. The Stockbridge Police Precinct. This project is under construction. The exterior is complete. Renovation of the existing building will start after the first of the year. The estimated construction completion date is in March. The Transit Building. This is a non-SPOST project. The funding for this project was obtained through the Federal Transit Association. The design is complete and plans are in review. This is scheduled to be put out for bid in January. And the last project on our list is a transit lube shop. This also is a non-SPOST project, and the funding for this project was also obtained through the Federal Transit Association. This project is currently out for bid, and bids are due December 17th. And that will conclude my update. Is there any questions?
Not a question, more a comment. And I always like to highlight the fact that without SPOST, the majority of the projects that you just saw would not be taking place in the county. Certainly, our citizens are to be commended for passing this referendum in November of, I believe it was 2007? Is that right? 2008, November of 2008. That combined with some federal grant money has really helped Henry County to construct all of these projects with no impact to our general fund budget, so, great presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other comments? Thank you very much. The next item under SPOST is an update on SPOST Transportation Projects, Rocky Romero, SPOST Transportation Projects Director.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Board members. I'm going to shift here for a second. I can reach, I'm not as tall as Mike. Currently, on the SPOST, we are acquiring these projects that we see on the screen, Harris Drive at Stairway 42, Rock Quarry Road, Bridge over the railroad, Oakland Road, Fairview Road at Stairway 155, and Hempel Road at Stairway 138. I want to mention that on Harris Drive at Stairway 42, we'll have a field plan, final field plan review with GDOT this coming December 8th. This is a GDOT project that they're going to be putting out for bid, but the county's buying the roadway and paying for the design. Current projects in design are Campground Road Extension, Rock Quarry Road, Bridge over the railroad tracks, Fairview Road widening, which includes Amble Block Road, East Atlanta Road and Thurman, Hempel Road at 138, and Old Highway 3 at Stairway 81. We have completed 11 projects this year with a total cost of construction close to 21 million. These projects are East Lake Road Extension, McDonough Parkway, Airline Road at Stairway 20, Bethany Road at Stairway 81, Keys Ferry Road at Stairway 81, Alconers Road at Flat Rock Road, Foster Drive, Collins Way, Collins Drive, South Bethany from Jackson Street to Price Drive, and the signalization of Pixfield Road at South Old. We have currently 10 projects under construction. These projects are Eagles Landing, Hudson Bridge, King Mill Road at 42, East Atlanta Bridge, Pulling Road, Rock Quarry Road, Rock Creek Road at Hampton Locust Grove, Simpson Mill, South Bethany Road, this is from Cohen to Philadelphia, Mackey Road and Stalsworth, and East Atlanta Road at Panola, with a current construction budget of over $36 million. Now, I'd like to provide some pictures of updates of... Uh, now, I'd like to provide some, uh, pictures of updates of where we were last, this is last, back in August, when we gave, uh, our previous presentation. This is where we are now. Uh, the bridge over the Pace Creek is being completed. This is Phase One. Uh, all the asphalt, or, except the topping, has been placed in this area. This is another picture. Uh, you can see all the asphalt that we, has been placed, that was placed back in November and, uh, early December. Uh, the contractor's getting ready to shift traffic, uh, by the end of, uh, this year. This is before. This is where we're at now. This is Phase One construction. This is another, another view. Both, uh... They're, they're just a little tad behind schedule, not, if you look at money-wise versus progress, uh, last month, they were a little bit behind, but last month, which was November, the paving had, was not started. Now, with all the pavement, I think they're probably going to be kind of on schedule right now, so, uh, we're looking into, like I mentioned, to shift traffic by the end of the year. Both bridges are completed. Uh, there's only a small portion that we have to work on the subgrade, um, before you get to the railroad tracks. And, uh, unfortunately, we had some rain last week that didn't help. And of course, if, if you don't work in, during the wintertime, rain is not good for, for, to be outside, because it kind of, the soil doesn't get dried as quick as, as during the summer, so, uh, we're shooting for, for the, before the end of the year to, to shift traffic. This is just another view. It's kind of hard to see, you probably see it better, but all that is asphalt going towards the, the bridge over the railroad tracks. This is, uh, East Lake Parkway, this project that we completed, uh, in the summer. Just another view of, of East Lake, which is going to connect to, of course, Eagles Landing Parkway. Uh, this is, uh, Hudson Bridge back in August. Uh, you can see the GAB and curb and gutter. Now, we have placed, uh, back in October and November, we placed a lot of asphalt, widening was, uh, placed in. Uh, that's back in August. That's now, you can see all the asphalt. We, we actually had to do some widening and flipping also. Uh, we probably got some calls from that one. But, uh, as you can see, we, we're just about done with this widening on Flipping Road. You're going to have right turns, which before you can have no right turns going north. This is, uh, Willis Drive. This is a new road that, that it connects the subdivision, uh, places, uh, Oak Manor, I believe is the name of it, and, uh, also Crowe, and it's going to be signalized. This is McDonough Parkway. This McDonough Parkway now is completed, with, which included the signal station of Stairway It's McDonough Parkway also. Uh, as you can see, uh, McDonough Parkway was built on a four, four-lane footprint, so, in the future, we'll be able to add the additional lanes to the, to the west. This is, uh, Stairway 81 at Bethany. This is a project we completed early this summer, which included, uh, left turns and right turns in all directions. This is Kiss Ferry back in August, Kiss Ferry 81. That's Kiss Ferry 81 now. Uh, we added left turns and right turns also, and signaledized the intersection. That's before, that's completed project right there. That's King Mill at, uh, 42 before. That's King Mill now, it's, uh, all paved. Uh, it's about 90% completed. Uh, what is next on King Mill, we're going to be doing the widening on 42. This is Alcony's Fly Rock, this is a project we completed early this summer. This is the old bridge on, uh, East Atlanta, uh, East Atlanta. This is a new bridge, uh, completed. We're about 90% completed on this project. The last thing, that's before, that's now. Uh, you can see the detour bridge is, is being used, and the cor, current, the new bridge has been finalized. Approaches, approach last were done last week, and paving, uh, side of it was a good, weather was pretty good, so they paved, they put some paving down there. This is Collins Drive back in August. This Collins Drive now, it's completed project. It's, uh, Pulling Road. Uh, it's kind of hard to see, that's Pulling Road now. Pulling Road, uh, half of, half of this project is completed.
Can you back up one?
Back up one. That's, uh, looking towards Simpson Mill.
Okay.
That's the same view, looking back towards Simpson Mill. Uh, the first portion is completed 100%. Uh, the other por, the other portion, half portions, uh, was delayed due to utilities. Uh, AT&amp;Ts should be out of the way by next week, and, uh, contractors is going to come back and, and finish, uh, finish the project. This is, uh, Simpson Mill Road back in August. Uh, Simpson Mill, early, uh, November, or late November, just before Thanksgiving, that we're out there paving. That's Simpson Mill back in August. Now, it's been paved. Uh, next in Simpson Mill, next, next part is going to be, uh, working on the shoulders and, uh, striping. It's just another view before. There you can see they, they have done two layers on one side, and they're coming back and finish that other topping on the right side. There's completed. That's, uh, South Bethany, the first South Bethany that we did, uh, from Old Jackson to, uh, West Price Drive. This project's completed early this summer. Uh, this one looks like Obama went through, but that's, uh, East Atlanta at Panola. That's back in August. Uh, now you can see we've done some, a portion of asphalt, and there's some utilities back where, where you see that white truck that were in the way. Now they're out of the way, and, uh, construction keeps on going. Uh, you can see here, we're installing the, got the signal poles up already, and, uh, subcontractors working on the signal, new signal. Uh, this is the new signal at, Pixfield at South Olah. Uh, we finished on time before school started. This is Rocky Creek, how I looked back in, back in the summer, very green. That's how it looks now. A lot of grading, we're, you can see the difference between the, the left, the road, and where the new road is going to be. We're cutting that, that hill significantly. And there's the, the equipment standing with, uh, all the rain, you can, I don't know if you can see that, the mud, but, uh, Central MCA has been relocating the power, power lines. You can see in the far right, the new power lines that been, been moved out of the way. Uh, we closed Rocky Creek on the north section. Uh, it's going to be closed till February. Uh, you can see here, we're, we're working on, on two box culvers. They're, they're pouring the top on one of them. Uh, this is South Bethany, and this is from Cohen to Philadelphia. Uh, you can see the clearing has started, uh, as well as, uh, the grading. Uh, we have also closed a section of, uh, South Bethany from, uh, Seabolt to Laney to build a box culver. And, uh, this is, uh, Mackey. Uh, Mackey and Stausworth are, work combined as one project. And, uh, they have started the clearing last week on this project. And that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions?
Does anyone have a question? Mr. Stamey?
Show 81 in Lake Dall. Uh, I know that's just, yes, GDOT money in there, but we, we participated with right of way in design.
I'll bring some next time. But on Lake Dall, uh, all the GABs being placed down, and paving should be pretty soon. I don't know, with the weather being so cold, I don't know if they'd be able to, to do anything, but, uh, another one that I didn't mention was, uh, and you may ask, this racetrack road at 81, uh, we completed all the roadway and got certification last Friday on this project. Uh, and this is also a GDOT project where we acquired the roadway for them. And, uh, GDOT is going to put it out for bid in February. So, we're, we're on track on that one. Uh, we made that one, too, so, um, any other questions?
Mr. Bowman.
I've got a couple. One, uh, the 138 and Millers Mill Road, I know that State DOT is working through that, but we've also got a million dollars in...
Correct.
Yeah, and right of way and some other things, so...
And right of way and construction.
And there's, I'm, I'm getting a few calls on it, because, uh, now, they're taking the curve, they're taking a lot of the curve out, and, uh, they're doing some other things, so on the next one, if you do a little update on that one...
I'll, I'll make a point to put it in there, too, so...
Also, uh, you mentioned, uh, Hemp Hill Road and 138. Uh, that's a joint project between District Five and District Four. And, uh, we only had like 1.2, has anything come up on that that I'm not aware of? I know we're, we're...
We, we're, we're about halfway on roadway, acquiring roadway. Of course, that's all county.
Right.
You know, it's, it's on a state route, but it's all, all county SPOLOST funds. Uh, we're about halfway into the roadway. Uh, there's some design changes, I think, uh, that, uh, County DOT, who started this design, the design portion of this project, they're going to bring up, hopefully, uh, on the next meeting, the, not tomorrow, but the 20th.
We're going to try to align Hemp Hill with, like, West Hemp Hill.
Yes, we're going to realign. Uh, we're moving, uh, the west north to align to, with the one on the east side. Plus, we, we've got to do a lot of grading, and a lot of, uh, feeling on the, on the east side, because, uh, as you know, it kind of, when, if you're going on to 138, you're looking up, so we're going to do a, a better job on that, you know, trying to, uh, have a better grade on that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Let me make a comment.
Mr. Holder?
No, I'm sure, just, just for the record, and I'm sure, because I've had calls about it, but to respond to, to the King Mill 42 intersection improvement, and, uh, Mr. Romero alluded to the fact that it was 90% complete. The reason for the delay is because of an injunction that was filed against Henry County by, by the Norfolk Southern Railroad about a sign issue in the westbound portion of King Mill. Hopefully, that'll be resolved soon, and that project can be completed. But, uh, it's not the fact that the county has stopped the project. Uh, many thought that that was going to be a, a road that was only going to serve the, quote, Clorox plant, which certainly is something that's not the case. But, uh, the reason is because of, of, of an injunction that was filed to stop the work on that road, and hopefully, that'll be resolved soon, and work will continue.
Then, there's not going to be a Clorox plant. Is that correct?
Well, I, I have no, I, I have no knowledge of one, no.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. The road wasn't there, but, you know, you, the way you put it, it sort of sounded like it was going to be there, but we didn't do it for them, but there's not going to be one there.
Not to my knowledge, but in the meetings, though, that they said that we were building that road for the Clorox plant. And another thing, Rocky, that I'd like to remind you of, uh, I know that this will be coming later in some, some shifting of funds and what have you. But remember that there's $200,000 in that King Mill State Route 42 improvement that came from a private contribution from, um, Whirlpool and those on the west side that, that contributed to the signalization and intersection improvement there, so don't let that go away. We need that 200,000.
Anybody else? Thank you, good presentation.
Thank you.
Did anyone sign up for public comment? Mr. County Manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
The upcoming meetings and events. Tomorrow, December 7th at 9:00 AM, we have a regular board meeting. Tomorrow, December 7th at 4:00 PM, there will be a dedication of a plaque in honor of the late Freddie Etheridge. The dedication will take place at the DOT building located at 533 Hampton Street in McDonough. Monday, December 20th at 9:00 AM, we have a regular board meeting. Monday, December 20th at 7:00 PM, um, that will be the inauguration service for the newly elected commissioners for District Two and Five, and the returning commissioner for District Four. This event will be held here at the County Administration Building located at 140 Henry Parkway McDonough, and, uh, we certainly invite citizens to come out if they wish to attend that, but you can also view that live on Charter Station Channel 14. Tuesday, December 21st at 6:30 PM, um, the regular board meeting, I believe, will be canceled. Is that correct? That we decided that we would cancel that meeting? At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel matters, and land acquisition. Motion by Mr. Stamey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark.
Before you go there, I'd like to point a clarification. Uh, Ms. Mathews, I think there's a, um, in, in our book, there's a 3 o'clock for the plaque tomorrow, and then there's a 4 o'clock on this front. Is, is it four, is it three? It is three? Terry?
I was thinking it's four.
It's 4 o'clock.
There was, there was a conversation about three.
We had some discussion about whether it was going, going to be 3 or 4, and, um, because of my schedule, and then I was told that the reason they had scheduled it for 4 o'clock is because DOT would be leaving to attend this, and then immediately following that would be leaving to go home. Is that correct?
It would be better for our schedule, because our guys are off at 4:30. If I have them there at 4, it would be a lot more convenient for us.
I just didn't know.
So, we moved it back to 4 o'clock. All right, so we had a motion by Mr. Stamey, and a second by Mr. Roark, all in favor. I need a motion to reconvene into public session. Motion by Mr. Stamey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stamey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. If there's no further business to come before this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bowman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.